Meeting, so we are going to start off with a moment of silence. Craig Testor, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any other new, do you have any items that anybody wants to add? Okay, do we have anybody from the public that wants to address the board? Okay, so we have several things I think that needs to go into closed session. So that would be for legal and personnel. Do we have a motion for that?
Motion.
And contracts.
Say it.
Who made the motion?
Mine.
Okay. Second, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Compton, you are up first tonight.
Ah, yes.
Mike.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Tommy.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Blankenship is not going to be with us tonight, and I'm a yes. Okay, we'll go to closed session.
Welcome to the Southern Gap High School groundbreaking ceremony. As most of you know, my name is Sherri Fletcher, and today I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your emcee. I would like to thank all of you for attending today. And the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April 1977 flood in the La Vasa Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of 1981 and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the La Vasa and Tuck Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section 202 of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by 1977 flood. Non-structural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April 1977 flood, or the 1% annual flood, also known as the 100-year flood, whichever is greater. In 2019, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of 2019. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October 27, 2020, to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of 1981. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the tech center, but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January 2021, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the tech center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the 202 program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the tech center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of tech center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets 202 program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Mrs. Mrs. Catherine Carver, Chief Real Estate Division of Great Lakes and Ohio River Division, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Shane Clem, Representative from Senior Mark Warner's office. Laura Beavens, Representative from Senior Kane's office. Cody Mumpower, Deputy District Director from Congressman Morgan Griffin. Tyler Lester, Representative from State Senator Todd Pillin's office. And Tom Lester, Representative from the Virginia House of Delegates Will Northfield. Our speakers for today will be Colonel Jason Putman, Shane Clem, Tyler Lester, Curtis Ellsworth, Craig Stiltner, and Angie McLennahan. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize members of Buchanan County Constitutional Offices. And we have Alan Boyd here for Sherri, Nikki Stiltner, Matt Pillin. Members of our Buchanan County Board of Supervisors. Craig Stiltner, Roger By, Jay Davis. Members of the County IDA Board, Alicia Oakwin, Matt Pillin, I'm not sure if they all appear, Tim Oakwin. And members of the Buchanan County School Board. I also want to thank some special people today. Our coaches and teachers from each high school for bringing the vans and helping with the parking. We have. We have students from each high school that was ushers today, thank you. And our Buchanan County Band. Our principals and central office staff, which has helped so diligently, and I couldn't have made it these past two days without my staff. They work hard, as well as all of the parents, students, and community members that are here today. So at this time, I would like for you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the National Anthem and the invocation. We will now be led in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance by our Eagle Scouts, Blake Brawls, and Brody Kinn.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now be led in the singing of the National Anthem by the Buchanan County Band. Now we have Hester Lightry from BSA Church of Christ.
Dear God, we are glad that you are here. We are glad that you were present at each and every meeting in the past. And we pray, and we are grateful that you, we know that you will be with us in the future. You're God, and you know the past, you're here now, and you're going to lead us into the future. We pray a special blessing upon this school, faculty, the staff, the leaders in our community. But most of all, we pray that out of this school will come students who will be great leaders in wherever you plant them. It's our prayer that every student that graduates from this school and all schools, that they will bloom wherever you plant them. But we pray, God, that you will continue to lead, guide, and direct. And we pray this prayer in the name of your son, who is the same yesterday, today, and forever, Jesus. Amen.
Our first speaker today is Angie McLennahan, Buchanan County Public Schools School Board Chairperson.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to stand here today on behalf of my fellow board members in the Buchanan County Public Schools. This has been a long journey, and while I recognize that we still have a journey ahead of us, today's milestone groundbreaking for construction of the Southern Gap High School is exciting, and it puts us one step closer to the opening the doors of the vast and invaluable opportunities that we can offer to our youth. We are only here due to the hard work and long hours that consisted of many meetings, collaboration, and negotiations between many. It is that work that often goes unrecognized, but today, with many of those individuals here, agencies and departments being present and represented, I want to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for making this school a reality with your diligence and your perseverance. As we all know, this beautiful new facility will open so many doors for academics, sports, vocational trades, arts, and musical opportunities for our children. The ability to host events beyond our district will be an asset to our community as a whole. How proud we will be to be able to hold these events here and show off our beautiful mountains and the southern hospitality of our Buchanan County folks. The Buchanan County Schools' mission statement is, "Our Children, Our Future, Our Responsibility." I truly cannot think of a better representation of that statement than the collaborative efforts for Southern Gap High School. May we never take for granted this blessed opportunity that we have been given that's going to outlive us all for generations to come. Go Eagles!
Our second speaker for today will be Shane Clem from Senator Mark Warner's office.
Thank you, Sherri, and I'll second that, "Go Eagles." I look forward to pulling for Southern Gap, except as my friend Tommy Krigger would say when they played the big R. Uh, that's all I have. I'm actually here, Senator Warner asked me to recognize one particular person. Took many people to get to this day. This individual is so responsive to our office, our multiple inquiries, always got back to us in a timely manner. And that individual is retired Colonel Robert Peterson. So I want to read this letter from Senator Warner on your behalf. "As committee gathers today for Buchanan County Public Schools groundbreaking for the consolidated high school, I'm pleased extending my appreciation for diligent work to bring this project to fruition. Civil servants like you are the backbone of our nation, dedicate themselves daily to ensure the American people can rely on their federal government. We are all indebted to you for your efforts as a project manager for the United States Army Corps of Engineers on the consolidated high school project. If you come up, I want to present something to you. I'm pleased to present you with an American flag that was flown over the United States Capitol. I hope it will display this flag in its official class as a reminder of its values, that represents and recognition of your commitment to serving our nation. On this important occasion, I'm pleased to join with your family, friends, and colleagues in saluting your accomplishments and wishing you success in all your future endeavors. Sincerely, Mark R. Warner." Well, we appreciate you, we appreciate you. Thank you, guys.
And I'd just like to say, I'm truly humbled and honored, and I just want to personally thank the Board of Supervisors, Craig Orne, the School Board, Melanie Hibbert, and of course Sherri and Angie for bringing it across the finish line. So yeah, this ceremony and this groundbreaking wouldn't have been possible without all of their hard work. So thank you, thank you.
Our third speaker for today will be Tyler Lester from Todd Pillin's office.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Senator Todd Pillin. As a member of the Senate Finance and Senate Education Health Committees, one of Senator Pillin's top priorities is providing the resources and opportunities necessary that allow our region's students to thrive and succeed, and working with federal and local partners to ensure that happens across all levels. He extends his thanks to the local leadership here in Buchanan County, our federal legislative delegation, and the Army Corps of Engineers for all the hard work and tough decisions that have had to be made along the way to get to this day. Much like your neighbors across the mountain in Dickinson County when Ridgeview High School was completed, this school here at Southern Gap will be the envy of southwest Virginia, providing a state-of-the-art facility that our students deserve to learn in, experience, and prepare for their futures. As construction moves forward, Senator Pillin stands ready to assist in any way that he can. And third time's the charm, "Go Eagles!"
Our fourth speaker will be Colonel Jason Putman, Huntington District Office.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, friends, and family, thank you for being here and really appreciate you guys inviting us to share this with you. I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add to what was said earlier. This really is a special event. You did hear how we got here, hey, section 202 unfortunately came out of the 77 flood, maybe a sad event for a lot of the folks who either lived it, heard about it, saw it, felt it. But in some cases, good can come from that. And 202 is special, just like this part of the country. I tell my team, they're probably sick of me hearing it, I'm originally from Vermont. That's where I grew up, so this is not unlike where I grew up. Some of the challenges are the same, some of the issues are the same. So it feels a little bit like home. And one of the unique things that we get to do at the Corps sometimes, it doesn't always work out this way, and sometimes it takes us time to get to that point, but we get to do things that do make a significant impact. Everything from dealing with disasters and seeing people on their worst day ever to events like this, where the event that led us to this may not have been great, but this one is. And as we have talked about, this focus is really about education for the children. And that makes such a difference for them and do much better than doing something for the education of children. So I really feel privileged to be here. I'm really happy because the colors are the same as my alma mater, West Point, so it makes it easy for me. If it had been blue and gold, like Navy, why does that not work? But no, congratulations on an achievement. And I will say, please join me in a round of applause for your federal, state, and local elected representatives that worked extremely hard through all of this to make sure that this got done. Their team's on a daily basis. And again, I don't know that I can say "Go Eagles" because... I guess I just did, right? But congratulations, good luck, obviously, we've still got some steps to go, but this is where you start, so thank you.
Next speaker will be Curtis Ellsworth from Skanska.
Not sure who put me after the Colonel. Good afternoon, everybody. What a significant day for Buchanan County. Being from here, I know how important this project is. I've been the project manager on this project for several years, through planning, design, and now you can see construction. But there's been a lot of people involved and a lot of effort been put forth. And so we want to recognize some of those people today that's really been working behind the scenes. And I'll start with the expanded Skanska team. We have with us Tim Burge, who will be our onsite inspector for the project. Jeff James, who's not with us today, who's been assisting in the project management responsibilities. And then we also have the team from Branch Builds, who's our design build contractor on the project. We have Mr. Mike Howdischel here in the group on the seat. Mike is a senior project manager, has been great to work with on this project. We also have some other representative of Branch Builds team scattered around, I can see some of them. Mr. Jason Hoyle, who's president of Branch Builds, is with us today. We have Artan Austin, project executive. Matthew Underwood, who I've known for many, many, many years. A graduate of Grundy Senior High School, I believe, Mr. Doug Childress. We have Business Development, John Gardner. Senior Superintendent Jimmy Kenyon with the fancy hat. Travis Cooper, I'm not sure if he's with us today or not. He's not. Joe King, who'll be superintendent for Branch Builds. And then we also have our architects from VMDO Architects out of Charlottesville. They are being represented by Joe Solontano. And they have a slew of consultants and people that have been working on this project. I talk to them almost daily, but I'm going to recognize some of them today. Andres Panceco, who's today. Brady Scott. Drew Fleming. I don't believe I've seen Kelly, but Kelly Callahan. Randy Livermon. As well as James Atkins, who cannot be here today. We also have a local firm who's our civil engineer on the project with Terra Tech, being represented by President Billy Campbell. Billy may be the one that's been involved in this project longer than me. And one other person in the back I see is Jessica Smelster with Envision, she's our furniture consultant. Imagine a lot of cleaning goes around the front. Imagine a lot of cleaning goes around the front. And quickly, and I'll be quiet, but there's a few other people I want to say special thanks to that have put in tons of hours on this project. That would be Jack Compton, who's a school board member. Angie McClanahan, school board chair. We have Ben Street, legal counsel with Buchanan County Public Schools. And I think my knee best friend is Sheri Fletcher, who we talk three or four times a day for the last, you know, year or so. So thank you all very much.
We have next Craig Steltner representing the board of supervisor.
I'm going to tell you a story, Mike. I know you want it, right? For those of you that don't know, Mike Raff is a diehard Jets fan. And he's sitting back here and he says, you know Craig, the one thing you missed, and he said, you missed a golden, we missed a golden opportunity to name that school right. We're thinking, and he said, there's, what else is at Southern Gap? I'm sitting here trying to think about what I'm going to say now, you know, I'm not worried about what else is here, you know? And he said, think about it, the Jets. And it goes to numps with the airport, right? So anyway, but you know, only Mike would be trying to figure out a way to get his New York Jets pushed into Buchanan County, right? We love you, Mike. But you know, I look around, I've been involved in Buchanan County for a long time, between coaching, politics, I see a lot of friends, and I'm a very emotional guy, I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I swear, I look around, I see this thing, and I mean, finally, I mean, man, I'm telling you, finally see it coming to pass. I mean, my daughter was in like the eighth grade when this thing first started happening. Craig Horn, the county administrator, and I, we talked about how our daughters was going to get to play basketball together at a new school, and you know, at Southern Gap, and it just never did happen. And then we start talking about it again, it kind of phases out, and then, you know, it starts getting a little snowball effect, and you know, finally, we're, you know, we're ready to break ground. So I want to thank everybody. I mean, everybody that's had a hand in on this. I know there've been a lot of people mentioned, there's had to be somebody we've missed, I mean, between the core and the local and the state and the federal. So let's give these guys a hand. One more time, anybody, if you had a hand in on this, I mean, seriously, just give my hand to get this thing going through. One thing I ask is that, you know, I brought up the thing about coaching, look back and see Coach Cooper and see several other coaches, Coach Compton back here sitting beside him, and you know, in coaching, you know, the one thing that really makes a good team is unity. And for a team to click, you got to come together. What makes a community come together, you know, is love. People can say what they want about Buchanan County. I've been around the world, I've been a lot of places, but I'm telling you, I always find my way right back here. I love Buchanan County, and I've said it for years, when it was Grundy High School, you cut me, I bleed blue and gold. If there's another team for Buchanan County playing that Grundy's not playing, you cut me, I bleed red and blue and white. I don't care, I bleed black and purple, as long as it's Buchanan County. But today, you cut me, I bleed black and gold. I'm diehard Southern Gap Eagles. I'm all about it, and I want you to bring that pride that you brought from Hurley, that you had at Hurley, that you had at Twin Valley, that we had at Grundy, bring it to Southern Gap, and let's go out and let's kick some butt, take names now, okay? Good thing. Love you guys.
It's a little difficult to follow after all of those. I just wanted to say some closing remarks to all of you today, that this day is not just about the groundbreaking, it's about building dreams, fostering opportunities, and laying the foundation for a brighter future for our kids. Southern Gap High School will not only be a place of academic excellence, but it will be a place for our kids to be creative, to be innovative, and to explore new passions and talents, and to grow as leaders of tomorrow. And I want to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of so many, many individuals that's made this day possible. Thank you for your commitment to our students. To the teachers and staff, thank you for your unwavering dedication to our students. It inspires us all. To the parents and community members, your support and involvement is invaluable, and we're deeply grateful for the trust that you place in us. So as we look forward to the future, this new school, Southern Gap High School, will be equipped with the state-of-the-art facilities, innovative technology, and flexible learning spaces that can meet all the diverse learning needs of all of our children. But our goal is to nurture not only the academics, but a sense of community. As Craig said, we have to be committed to ensuring that this school will reflect the diversity and that they get to communities together, and that so every child will have the opportunity to thrive. So as we break this ground today, let us also break barriers. Let us break the barriers of doubt, of fear, of the limitations that hold our students back. Let us build the bridge that will connect our students to their dreams, their future, and to each other. Together, we have that power. We have the power to create an environment where every student will succeed and our community will flourish. This groundbreaking ceremony marks the beginning of a new era in the education for our community, and I am thrilled to see what the future holds. So let us celebrate this milestone, not just for the building that's going to be built on this site, but for the countless lives that's going to be transformed within its walls. Together, we're building a legacy. We're building a legacy of hope and opportunity and success for generations to come. Thank you. So now, what we've all been waiting for, I'm going to ask all of our distinguished guests to pick up a shovel, and we'll secure it in the dirt. So if all of us can, the shovels are down here. Want the hard hat too? I forget about the hard hat. I told them I didn't want my hard hat, but they guessed that. And I said, I don't look at any hats. On the count of three, we'll call paper. One, two, three. I don't. I'm more.
I'm doing different nails, hair and learning all the big break things about it.
I like learning about how important cyber security is to everything just like with my video game passwords, like just going to the store, how everything's just out there in a way. This is very interesting class and I love how in Popcorn Fridays.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy?
My favorite part?
Doing impressions on some of my friends that take the same class.
Well, I love doing anatomy and when we... well, I don't know. I just like doing anatomy and stuff like that. It was fun.
My favorite part about the class is the fun activities and learning about law enforcement. But you can't forget my favorite teacher, Brian.
What's your favorite part about pharmacy class?
My favorite part is getting here and building basically anything you want along with the people that are in here. It's like a supportive environment.
What's your favorite part about your class?
Probably just working on all these colors and helping my friends.
For art in class, I like draw stuff and putting it up.
I like cooking because then you get to eat food afterwards. So, that's pretty cool.
My favorite part is the skills and getting to go to the nursing home. I like the more hands-on instead of just having to do bookwork all the time.
What about they had greenhouse? I was like, okay, I'll take that. I did it for the logo plants from my great-grandmother who taught me how to take care of her garden and stuff.
I like it a lot because it's what I want to do. I learned a lot from it. It's an excellent teacher. I was learning to raise, if anybody's watching, a bit of a hell of a raise. I don't know, I just like the way I'm growing up, you know what I mean?
We are sixth grade from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
My name is Carter Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 4D class Council Elementary.
We are family!
We are 4A from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 7B from Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are first grade Council Elementary School.
We are family!
We are 2Y from Council Elementary Middle School.
We are family!
And we love our school momma!
And your same momma loves you.
We are family!
I love high school because the academic offers are pretty amazing.
Hurley High School because the staff humors are amazing and the friendships last forever.
My favorite memory was when I got a scan in my eighth grade year with Hannah.
At Hurley High School, all the teachers are very engaging. All the students are very friendly. All the staff make sure that you have a great day. Everyone, you can force them in class engaging. They get very fun, enjoyable. The friendship here will be forever. You'll never forget it.
I love Hurley High School for the academics and the sports.
My favorite memory of high school is just hanging out with friends.
I love all the amazing stuff here that teaches me every day.
My favorite memory at the high school so far is making memories with the softball team.
My favorite memory from high school is beating Tug Riley last year in football. You're right.
My favorite part about high school is how all the teachers work and focus on every single student so hard to make sure everybody's successful in what they do.
My favorite part about Toon Valley High School is the family atmosphere and the sense of community.
My favorite thing about Toon Valley High School is the cafeteria staff and all the hard work that they put into preparing the meals, especially during national breakfast time.
My favorite thing about Toon Valley High School is all the extracurricular activities. I participate in volleyball, basketball, track, theater, and yearbook.
My favorite thing about Toon Valley is participating in labs and group projects.
My favorite thing about Toon Valley High School is the gym class and all the activities that come along with it.
Hi, my name is Wadi. I'm in the fourth grade. I love coming to school because my teachers make it fun to learn and I love all my teachers. All the guidance counselors here are great.
My name is Ella and I'm in the fourth grade. I love all the teachers here because they help us learn and my school is amazing. Everyone here works hard and is great.
Hi, my name is Gracie and I'm in the fourth grade. I like coming to school to see my teachers and my friends. Everyone in our building is kind and helps us when we need something.
Hello, my name is Grayson Rice. I am a third grade student at Riverview Elementary Middle School. What I like most about our school is that it is fun and exciting place to learn. And I like being with my friends. I really like my teachers. They help me learn new things.
My name is Werner Robertson. I am a third grade student at Riverview Elementary Middle School. I love my school. I love it because my teachers are the best. My school makes learning fun for me and my friends. My school also plans fun things for me and my friends to do.
Hi, my name is Joseph McCoy and I'm in the fifth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. At Riverview Elementary Middle School, the faculty and staff are supportive and encouraging. They work hard for their students to be successful. You'll also find a friendly atmosphere where students get along. It is a safe environment for learning. Riverview Elementary Middle School gives students many opportunities to be involved in activities during and after school. From athletics to academics, after-school programs provide a place where students can succeed outside the classroom. Riverview is home.
Hi, my name is Cage Church. I'm 12 years old and I'm in the sixth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. Some reasons why I like my school are that the staff and students are very nice. I have a lot of great friends. I play baseball, football, basketball, and I'm on the academic team, the Lego Robotics team, and the Robot Drone League team.
My name is Virginia Van Dyke. I'm 12 years old and I'm in sixth grade at Riverview Elementary Middle School. I participated in our school's Robot Drone League and I'm a part of the academics team. And some of the things that I like about school is having all of the teachers here to help you whenever you need it and having so many different after-school activities to participate in and being able to just interact with so many different people.
Hi, my name is Timmy Stilner. I'm in seventh grade. The best thing about Riverview is our people. We have wonderful students, teachers, administration, and support staff.
My name is Carter Deal and I'm in seventh grade. Riverview is the school that cares deeply about students' wellbeing, academic success, and personal growth.
I'm an eighth grader here at Riverview and what I love most about Riverview is the faculty and staff.
My name is Remington Stacy. I'm in eighth grade and some of the things I like about the school is the teachers. They're all very friendly and they're outgoing. The principals are great. And I just, I really enjoy being able to come hang out with friends and just get through the school day and just have a good time. I've always kind of enjoyed school, but this year it's really been great because all the teachers have been very friendly and all the staff and everybody. It's really a great school for kids to come to.
These are the things I like about school: math, art, and library.
I like recess and when we have fun math coloring pages and when we have Christmas and Valentine's Day parties.
My favorite thing about school is coming and seeing my teachers and doing math.
What I love about my school is I love learning new things and getting to play outside with my friends and the teachers always help me when I need help.
The thing I like about school is classwork, activities, science projects, recess, and loving all my teacher.
The thing I like about school is having friends and I like going to PE and I like calligraphy.
My favorite things are library, music class, friends, and my teachers.
My favorite things to do at school is to do math and play outside.
My favorite thing at school is to play with my friends and to play outside and I like doing art.
What about Riverview is we get to play on the playground.
My favorite thing about school is math.
I like learning new stuff and learning new numbers.
My favorite thing about school is seeing my friends.
My name is Olivia Lee. I love Riverview because the teachers are incredibly kind and learning there is a blast. They make learning engaging with fun rhymes and techniques. Riverview's exceptional staff including teachers, counselors, and principals make it an outstanding school. Plus, the variety of fun programs available make learning even more enjoyable. That's why Riverview holds a special place in my heart.
I love my school. I love my friends and their school is great.
One of the things I like about our school is the teachers because they're amazing.
I love my school because I get new opportunities every day and I get to learn new things. And I love how my staff members in the morning always say good morning to me and bring a smile to my face.
What I like about my school is the teachers, the staff, how the teachers make learning fun. I like to talk to my friends, play with my friends.
I love my school because I make new friends.
Thank you for joining us today. We hope you enjoy the show. We'll be back in a minute.
Governor Yonkin and the Virginia Department of Education has endorsed the All In Virginia Tutoring Plan. And they are taking action to ensure students get the academic support they need to recover from learning loss. The All In Virginia Tutoring Plan for Reading and Math is based on data from the SOL Spring 2023. This data indicated throughout Virginia, one in two students struggle in reading and two in three students struggle in math. All In Tutoring Virginia Plan will be implemented for grades kindergarten through eighth grade in reading and math before school, during the school day, and after school. Virginia Department of Education has developed a division playbook with program recommendations that is on our division website. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Sherry Fletcher, Division Superintendent, at (276) 935-4551, or your child's school principal. Now, our school leaders will explain more about the All In Virginia Tutoring Program.
Tutoring is proven to be most effective when delivered in high doses five days a week and over a set period of time. We are committed to provide daily tutoring for all students in grades three through eight in reading and math and have incorporated high dosage tutoring within our daily instructional schedule.
We're all in!
Tutoring is most effective if offered in small groups of students with a student-to-teacher ratio of ten to one. So tutors can customize the teaching to accommodate each individual student's needs and skills students need to practice.
We're all in!
Tutors will use the Learning Acceleration Approach where they connect gaps in learning to grade-level standards.
We're all in!
Tailoring the content to the student's grade level ensures they receive appropriate support while fostering academic growth.
We're all in!
All In Tutoring is a high-intensity academic tutoring initiative built upon solid research. It aims to swiftly uplift our at-risk students to grade level, ensuring enhanced student engagement and improved grades across all classes.
We're all in!
We believe that by establishing and facilitating strong positive relationships between tutors and students, we can increase student achievement and build confidence in the classroom.
We're all in!
Utilizing already-established digital progress monitoring will allow for personalized tutoring tailored to students' needs without additional extensive planning. This modality of progress monitoring will allow students to progress at their own pace, creating beneficial learning experiences for all students.
We're all in!
We must all work together to ensure students are engaged in school each day. Attendance matters.
We're all in!
With the additional resources provided by Governor Yonkin, along with our dedicated staff and the support from our community and parents, we can ensure our students demonstrate academic growth and success. We are all in.
All our fabulous students.
Grace Hibberts, one of the best teachers ever.
Everybody's just been so welcoming to me, teachers and students. All the people here. I like the school. It's beautiful.
I love the teachers. They're pretty cool. Pretty chill.
Room 101.
I have good food.
Lonnie Webb.
Mark Cooper.
The teachers.
Our friends.
It's where kids come first.
All the people and the teachers like everything right here.
Probably the students.
My opinion, our wonderful staff and administrators make ground be great. Specifically, Lonnie Webb, Keegan Bartley, Scotty Bostick, Megan Wolford, and most importantly, Mark Cooper!
Hello folks, my name is Steve Cole. I'm the Autobody Instructor here. Or everybody calls me the Old Dude for some odd reason. Must be the graveyard or whatever. Uh, we teach everything in Autobody from little bitty dings to great big keel. Okay, we've got a Mustang here. Uh, it's ready to paint. Hopefully, we can get together and have some paint on it before long. Uh, we also do some custom painting and I'll call your attention up here to our panels and plaques and things that we've done. We've done some airbrushing and pinstriping, things like that, uh, just sort of to break it up a little bit. And no shop is complete without uh, of course, we've got Spiderman over here. And we've got Wild Wee Coyote, which is just about hidden. Excuse me. You also have to have Bugs Bunny. Now, that's badly important. And that's some of the things we've done here in the shop. And over here is our tool room. We have just about, and it's a mess right now. We're not organized very well with everything that's going on. We have just about every tool that you could imagine to do this type of work with. We actually do teach welding in here also. This is our welding station. Uh, we have our welders, cutters, everything that we need because, you know, if a car's wrecked and we have to, you know, cut out sections, you have to know how to weld to put them back together. So that's a, that's a big plus. Like I said, we do all the different stages of welding too. Uh, over here, we have our frame rack. No matter how bad a car is tore up, if it's worth fixing, we can stretch it back out and make it right and make it look like it just was never wrecked. And over this way. Uh, we've got a van here. Some of the students have painted. And like I said, we cover everything from the basic little dents to all the way, uh, complete finished paint jobs. And I'll take you to the paint booth next. We have a full setup down-drive paint booth with bake cycle. We can put a finish on a car just like you get from the factory. Uh, this does really good. It's well heated. It's safe, uh, plenty of airflow. And of course, we have all of our safety equipment and everything when we're painting. And uh, we do all kinds of different paint work. We do just basic paint jobs. We'll do custom painting. And uh, and that's really the fun stuff. So, and we'll go on out this way. And we also have been able to paint walls and things like this. Some of my students did this in their locker room. And just all kinds of stuff. We generally have a big time. Uh, that's the nickel tour. Come on back when you can and come on in. I'll show you how to do some bodywork, paint some cars, and hopefully we'll have some fun as we learn. Thank you now.
Hi, my name is Rick Jackson. I'm the Cartonry Instructor here at Buckingham County Technology and Career Center. Uh, this is one of the projects that we uh have worked on here in the class. Uh, we've got a little tiny house out here that we're uh building. So, you know, uh, you can take this class to learn to read prints. You can, you know, just learn to use the tools, the safety of it. Uh, you know, be glad to have you in the class.
My name is Stephanie Mullins and I'm a CNA instructor here at the Career Center. And the CNA program is two semesters, uh, so it's a full-year program. You can take it once you are sixteen years old. So it's mainly for juniors and seniors, but if you're sixteen in uh your tenth grade year, you are eligible for the program. The thing about being a nurse aide is besides being able to work part-time while you're in high school, you can also see if the medical field is right fit for you before you invest too much time and also you build up the career ladder. You can become a, after you get your CNA license, an LPN, a RN, physical therapy assistant, occupational therapy assistant. There's different careers in the medical field that you will use your CNA skills. At the Career Center here, uh, with the CNA program, the first semester, we do a lot of medical terminology. So it helps you further on if you're going into any medical career. You also will do clinicals at our local nursing home. So you'll get to go and do a, uh, activities of daily living with the residents and get to meet and greet with them and uh do your skills. On the Career Center, they will pay for your boards if you have at least an eighty percentile. And you have to have an eighty percentile in order to be board-eligible. But they will pay for your boards. There's two sections, a written exam and a skills competency. And they will pay for it and we will provide you transportation as a group to go take your state boards. And you can become licensed while you're still in high school. And um you're guaranteed to get a job somewheres. Um, there is such a shortage of health professionals right now. They make really good money, uh, especially for a young adult that's maybe wanting to um have a job, like I said, part-time while they're going on through school or going on to college. What I like about it is you get so much patient interaction as a nurse aide. Uh, and we learn, we get to work with our mannequins. We have vital sign equipment that we use to do uh vital signs with. We do range of motion, therapy skills, um, assistance to welcome. So, uh, it's really good program and I would love to have uh anyone that's interested. They can contact me here at the Career Center or email me.
This class is going to get you ready for anything that you would want to do uh in cosmetology or barbering or nails or aesthetics. We do all of that. Everything in our textbook that we study every day. You can go to salon, whatever you go to salon and purchase, that's what we do. So after you come to the class for two full years, you're eligible to take boards. So what is boards? Well, and we have to have a license to do hair. We have to have a license to do anything that we do. You may want a cosmetology license which certifies you to do everything. You may want to, just a nail tech license that you can only do nails. You can get just a braiding license. You can get a license just to do uh waxing, uh, any type of waxing. Whatever license that you choose that you would like to do, you could specialize. But with a cosmetology license, you specialize in all of it. So after you take the two-year program, uh, I get you ready for your state boards. And once you take your state boards, you're certified to do, and of course, you have to pass. And you certify, you were certified to do everything. It certifies you to do the nails, the skincare, aesthetics. It certifies you to do the waxing. It certifies you to do everything that there is to do in cosmetology. I have a hundred percent pass rate every year. And the students, they took um and took their boards. They all took their boards. Everybody that went to boards passed. We had a hundred percent pass. But this year, I was exceptionally proud of the children because of the fact that we went through this pandemic and we didn't know how they were going to do. But they came back in. We worked all summer long. We didn't get to go to boards until August. So once we got to boards, they took their written. They made a hundred percent. August, so, once we got to boards, they took their written, they made 100%, they took their practical, they made 100%. So, I'm very proud of the students. We do a lot of activities here in the classroom, we do a lot of hands-on, all of our hands-on that we do, get you ready for the workplace. Also, we have a student organization. What we do is we compete with all the other schools in the ninth district. So, this past year, we competed in March before we got pulled out of school because of COVID, and we had students that all placed first place in district contests, and then I had one to place second. Last year, we went to Nationals, and I had a student that competed in nails, and she finished fourth in the nation. Since I've been working here at the Career Center, I have students who have competed in the Skills USA in the state level. My students have won 20 gold medals. Also, I had 19 silver medals in the state, and then I had seven bronze medals in the state of Virginia. So, my kids do something right. If you want to learn and you really want to know how to work in this field and you want to make lots of money, you can, because that's what we do. I get you ready to go to work. These are all my pins, and I wear these pins very proudly. And my students won these pins. I didn't win them. But they worked really hard to be able to compete and go to state and win.
My name's Howard Fuller. I teach cybersecurity. You'll learn how to hack a, basically, it's for hacking. For another known, there's two types of hackers. There's a white hat hacker and black hat hacker. The white hat hacker is what I teach. You're going to learn how to crack passwords, learn how to use different operating systems, that is used for PIN testing, testing different operating systems. You can run baselines on networks, just a variety of different techniques. Some techniques don't even require computers, such as social engineering. And we'll visit all these different types of techniques that will entail your start into cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is one of the largest growing fields that's available today for students, and there's a lot of money involved in it. And about every industry you look at will require some type of security work in.
Hi, I'm Stacy Caruthy, a Registered Dental Hygienist and the Dental Assisting Instructor here at the Buchanan County Career and Technology Center. This course is a two-semester course for ninth through 12th graders that will prepare you to work as a dental assistant. As you can see, we have state-of-the-art dental operatories where you will learn to assist a dentist with dental procedures such as fillings, crowns, and routine dental cleanings. You will also learn to take dental impressions, dental x-rays, and manage the front area of a dental practice. The national average salary of a dental assistant is $40,000 a year. So, come enroll now and get your career started in the dental field with us.
Okay, my name is Mr. Sturgeon. I'd like to welcome you to the Horticulture and Greenhouse Plant Management Class here at the Vocational School. What we do out here, we take plants and learn how to maintain them. We start off with fully mature plants, do cuttings, show you what part will grow, get them to grow, so you see around the greenhouse here. And then, at the end of the season, we sell to the public at a discount rate, try to cover our expenses. So, if you're interested in learning about plants and how to maintain them and grow them, be sure to check us out here at the Buchanan County Technology Career Center.
This is the Practical Nursing Classroom, and our program is a two-year program. The cool thing about our program is that high school seniors can start this program, and then they could finish the second year of the program as an adult. When we complete the program, you have the opportunity to apply for Southwest Community College, and if you get accepted into their nursing program there, you could do the bridge program and have an RN degree in one year. So, you can take two more semesters through Southwest, well, actually, it's three semesters. You do a summer conversion classes a few weeks, and then it's been three semesters. But in three semesters, you can complete your RN degree with Southwest Community College by doing their bridge program. But our program is all-inclusive. You don't have to have any extra college classes. You take everything that you need here at this school for this program. And for high school seniors, the program is free. You don't have to have any cost, and it's taught at a college level that you're not having to pay for. So, that's another big plus for our program. We have excellent board pass rates, and we have really successful students that complete this program, and they are ready to go work in the medical field as a nurse when they
Hello, my name is Robin Ratliff, and I teach the Pharmacy Technician Program here at the Buchanan County Career Center. The Pharmacy Technician Program is a one-year program. It is open to Buchanan County students. It is preferred that you take this class as a senior, because at the end of your senior year, you take a board exam. After you pass that board exam, you can go to work as a Certified Pharmacy Technician in all 50 steps. This class is also very helpful for anyone that is deciding to go into any type of medical field. And if you have any questions, contact me, the Technology Center, or your guidance counselor.
Welcome to the Southern Gap High School Groundbreaking Ceremony. As most of you know, my name is Sherry Fletcher, and today, I am greatly honored to be, to serve as your emcee. I would like to thank all of you for attending today, and the first thing today, I will provide a little background information for those of you that may not be familiar with our journey. In response to the April 1977 flood in the Levasse Fort Basin and the millions of dollars in damage and losses from this flood, the Energy and Water Development Appropriations Act of 1981 and the subsequent legislation provided authorization for the development of flood protection measures for the Levasse and Tug Forks of the Big Sandy River Basin. Section 202 of that legislation directed the Secretary of the Army, acting through the Chief of Engineers, to design and construct flood risk management measures in those affected area by 1977 flood. Non-structural flood control measures implemented would prevent further losses from occurring either from a flood equal in magnitude to the April 1977 flood, or the 1% annual flood, also known as the 100-year flood, whichever is greater. In 2019, the Buchanan County Non-Structural Flood Damage Reduction Project received supplemental appropriations to complete flood risk management measures pursuant to the Disaster Relief Act of 2019. This supplemental appropriation authorized the government to complete implementation of the project at full federal expense. The Corps and the sponsor amended the project cooperation agreement on October 27, 2020 to reflect the implementation of the project at all federal expense, the flood risk mitigation measures pursuant to the study authorization, Energy and Water Development Appropriation of 1981. A detailed evaluation confirmed the feasibility of a ring wall to protect the Tech Center, but revealed substantial technical issues regarding feasibility of a ring wall to protect Hurley High School. The recommendations for Hurley High School has thereby been modified from ring wall to flood plain acquisition. In January 2021, the Buchanan County Board of Education voluntarily proposed an alternative plan to consolidate the Tech Center and Hurley High School into a shared replacement facility on a new relocation site at Southern Gap. This site would be also utilized to consolidate up to two other county high schools. Corps' review of the site determined it meets and/or exceeds the criteria to meet the 202 program. Given cost savings for the high school and reduction of operational risk and uncertainties associated with the Tech Center ring wall, it was determined relocation of the function of Tech Center and Hurley High School to the Southern Gap site is in the best interest of the federal government and meets 202 program intent. I would like to start by recognizing our distinguished guests and speakers. We have Colonel Jason Putman, Commander of the Huntington District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This is Catherine Carver, Chief Real Estate Division of Great Lakes and Ohio River Division, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Shane Klin, Representative from Senior Mark Warner's office. Laura Beavens, Representative from Senior Kane's office. Cody Mempire.
I have to order, do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Do we have anything to come out of closed session?
Well, Curtis is making a request to approve change order number two from the early site package, and it would be a $0 amount. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
And I'm a yes.
Curtis has also made a request to approve the concrete slabs. I think he did, he was told us or mentioned. What is that? Where's Curtis? Okay, who was it to? The bid to?
Procon.
Procon is the subcontractor that's the change order to bring.
Okay, and what was the dollar amount?
It's $3 million something like that.
$934, $541, sound right? Okay, so, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for, to pay security at the ballgames, that the rate be $35 an hour, which was requested by the sheriff, that security be...
He's got to review the contract.
That the security be, the security, that the scheduling be conducted between the sheriff's department and the athletic department, and then any legal contract to be, that it's going to need to be signed, would need to be worked out through legal and the sheriff's offices. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
I'm a yes.
I'd like to also make a motion to, for the athletic funds, for there to be a cap. The athletic department's, anything below $3,000 that the athletic directors and principals can handle on their end, anything above that that they would handle through the superintendent's office, except for Council High, which would revert back to managing their own funds as they've done in the past. Second.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No, but I'm glad that Council gets to spend their money the way they want to. So, I have to vote no.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for, to pay security at the ballgames, that the rate be $35 an hour, which was requested by the sheriff, that security be...
He's got to review the contract.
That the security be, the security, that the scheduling be conducted between the sheriff's department and the athletic department, and then any legal contract to be, that it's going to need to be signed, would need to be worked out through legal and the sheriff's offices. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Subject to legal, I think so.
Did you a solid?
Any further discussions? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Stay.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Did we approve the Council High get a cross-country coach at the last meeting?
I don't think we did.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Council High gets, is this an assistant cross-country coach or?
Yes.
Okay, so, I make a motion that they get that funding.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
We've had a request for Erica Owens to be appointed the guidance counselor at the new high school, Southern Gap High School. This would be a lateral move. She's currently a guidance counselor, but there's been requests by the administrators of the new high school, and I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
I'm a yes.
We've had a request for Kayla Hartford to receive $2,500.
Kelly.
Kelly, sorry. Kelly, I have Kelly down, I missed.
Talking to me.
Yeah. Kelly to receive a raise for additional duties at the school, $2,500.
Any further discussion?
We got a list over there of people that's come before, and I just, if we do it for one, we have to do it for all. I'm a no.
Mike?
Stay.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
No.
I'm a yes.
Okay.
So, that passed.
All my motions.
We just can't, can't do one?
Three.
Do them all.
Two, one. Okay, next on the agenda is Discussion and Approval Minutes from our September 17 meeting. Does everybody have a chance to read over those? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Number six on the agenda is the Discussion and Approval of Payables. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Tester, do we have the money to pay? Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
With exception, I forget, Southern Gap, whatever you call it.
And I'm a yes. Number seven on the agenda, 7.01 is Enrollment Update and Class Size Report.
Okay, all right, enrollment for this month is 2214, and with pre-K, it's 2331. We lost two students from last month to, let me see, I think they went out of county.
Lost two? Did you say two?
We lost two. We lost two. Our class size report is, in elementary school, our average class size is 15.7. And in high school, our average class size is 20.4.
Is what?
20.4. In elementary, the class size goes from 13.4 up to 18 students per class. And at the high school, it ranges from 17.6 to 20.4.
Do those with 20.4 get more paid for the ones that only got 17?
Are they going on?
Do they? I mean, I'm just asking. We're going to pay nurses more because they have more kids.
You know, we need to get rid of this debt. We need to pay everybody an hourly rate. And that way, we can assign it, and it alleviates all this.
We'll be the first in Virginia to do it.
Well, we were the first in Virginia to ban drugs in the school system. We certainly did that with students, athletes. We were the first, we've been the first, we've been last in a lot. When I first started 20 years ago, we were last, or close to last in accreditation. That's not something to be in. But I don't mind being the first in things that make a difference.
Well, I just, I just think if you're going to do one, you got to do them all. And it's the list that Jack keeps talking about.
What are we going to do with that 29-hour employee that we sent down there to help with those students? Do they still have a job?
Guys, I've told you before, voted up, voted down, let's move on.
I'm just asking. I mean, I just want to know if we're not laying anybody off.
Vote it up, vote it down, and move on.
Okay, 7.02, next.
Does the one down there, they still have a job for 29 and a half hours that we sent down there to help before?
What are we talking about?
The nurse that we just give more raised it.
I don't think so.
So we're going to lay somebody off.
And this is personnel, right?
Hold on, these are legitimate, valid points on all sides. But because they do concern a specific employee, it would be better to discuss these things in closed session.
What are we up to? What's on the agenda?
I'm on 7.02, it's where I was trying to go.
Okay, substitute volunteers and coaches. What do we got?
We have, go ahead.
In-service for four?
Four, yeah. Kathryn Boyd, Haley Blackburn, Chastie Hagy, and Molly Harrison.
I'm making a motion to approve what the administration's put forth, these four names.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Next, 7.03 is retirements. We have Gaynel Cox.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve her retirement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is this an effective date? The effective date is 9/30, 2024? With that effective date? Oh, effective date, sorry, 10/1, 2024.
Do we have a second on that? Did you second it? Okay. Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next, we have policy update on our second readings. So, Policy BDD. Policy GC, Policy IAA, Policy JEC, and Policy JO. We had those, this is second reading, so.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. 705 is our gifted advisory board on the committee members.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We need to approve or discuss the Buchanan County Consolidated Group Health Insurance Policy Plan.
Is this the same plan as last year?
Yes, it is. I mean, it's the resolution that was set down from Craig's office for us to approve the resolution.
So any, any significant, any significant changes?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
You know, 5% increase.
It's a 5% increase.
An increase.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
You said it is basically the same thing as we had last year?
It's our health insurance. You got the 5% increase and the...
But it's not that. Were they talking about that mark three or something like that?
No, this is, this is our health insurance, this, yes.
And you presented this increase in our budget, correct, Cheryl?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Jack?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.